We'll call the regular meeting of the August School Board meeting to get to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present except Laurie Dudley is absent this evening. Recognition of visitors and guests, we welcome all of you here this evening. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correspondence and recognition, I've received no requests for public participation. 1.42, I have no recognition items this evening. 1.43, presentation by Alice.
Allison Etrem.
Etrem, Special Education Director regarding Special Education.
Oh sure, thank you. I don't think any of the mics are working right now. Test, test.
Got it. All right. Well, thanks for having me here tonight. I wanted to come and share a little bit about a program that we are kicking off this year in our Worthington High School. This is a program that we had quite a number of years ago, and due to some staffing changes, we weren't able to offer some things, and now this year we are again. So I wanted to talk about our work-based learning program. Today, about thirty-one states have a work-based learning program and career readiness indicators following the CTE coursework, and it's based on assessments and school quality and student success. The vast majority of our high mobility jobs require a credential beyond high school, but not necessarily a four-year degree. So our work-based learning program seeks to help students that maybe are looking for a different track to be contributing back to our communities. And it's industry, it's focused on apprenticeships and internships within industries, and giving time to practice those skills within the high school environment before they're out of high school. We focus on the different areas within our transition program, which I'll go through. There are sixteen career clusters that we focus on for in-demand fields, from business Students who will be entering the workforce immediately out of high school have the opportunity to gain important job-specific employability skills through our work-based learning program. They're job-specific, and their independent living skills are also structured within this manner throughout the coursework that they take from ninth to twelfth grade. And this fall, we have a licensed work-based learning teacher on staff that can provide Work-based learning is an education pathway, and it provides students with academic, technical, and real-world knowledge, skills, and experience that they need to be prepared for a variety of career options. This is related to IDEA and a couple other laws, federal laws. Their personalized hands-on lets students explore career fields from middle school really up through high school. We're going to focus on the high school areas. The signatures of a strong program for work-based learning include a rigorous curriculum. We are using a curriculum called Next Up and PACE. And the curriculum is delivered through activities that address authentic problems, so they get real-world experience. It also integrates math and literacy and science concepts within the program. It also needs to have a well-prepared teacher to be able to provide this, and with our teacher now being certified in the work-based learning, we can provide that. And through that, she will also constantly be asking students about questions and encourage them to ask each other questions, so they're getting that social interaction as well as problem-solving in work environments. These are what we'll be currently offering this fall, these types of classes. So it will close everything from a class where it's more of the classroom series talking about what they would experience on the job, to then our PACE lab is a series of a hundred, two hundred different jobs where they actually have a kit that they pull out and they work through that to see if that's an area of interest, though related to plumbing and electrical and healthcare and food service, all different things. And they can start to narrow down interest areas before we put them on a job site. What are the benefits for our students? Well, our students at that place will need authentic work-based learning skills. Many need both hard and soft skills, and this program would provide both. They need opportunities to explore a variety of career pathways and not just the general, you know, if they go out and get a job at McDonald's or Ace Hardware, things like that, it isn't necessarily giving them the training in how to have a job and how to work through those different complex things that we do with talking to a boss or doing an interview. And this work-based learning program will help students learn those skills to be successful and continue in their jobs that they do attempt to work through. There's a daily review, new material presented in small steps, modeling and guided practice. They have checks for understanding, scaffolding, step-by-step guides, independent practice and review as part of this classroom experience before they go on the job. And that has proven to be particularly effective. Also critical but rarely discussed is the importance of occupational socialization. While schools can replicate the appearance of a workplace in our school through the PACE lab and different job experiences, we cannot replicate true socialization on the job. So the final step is in their junior and senior year, they'll be placed on job sites and try two or three different job situations. This is just a few more benefits for our students here that I summarized. There are transition assessments that help kids narrow down to their interests in addition to the classroom and those hands-on activities. Knowledge and skills that are gained through the work-based learning experiences include all those listed, I won't read through them, but it provides students the educational opportunities to better advocate. And a lot of our students with special needs are intellectually average to above average, honestly, but they might lack the skill to be able to communicate about their skills or advocate for a health need or a day off. And so these programs help prepare kids to navigate those. It also helps them learn how to navigate their IEP. So they all have an individualized education plan that helps them get the combinations and supports that they need. And while an IEP doesn't have a place in a workplace legally, it does help them learn about themselves over these years of high school and how to advocate for those needs once they're out of school. Students typically will enter the workforce immediately out of high school and need this unimportant opportunity to gain the job-specific employability skills. And this individualized training, full secondary independent living skills, employability skills, they're a required part under IDA, EAA, and the Special Education Law that we provide to students. So we do need to find ways that best support our kids. And a work-based learning program is quite a neat experience for our kids to be able to have it kind of all tied together. Not a lot of schools can offer something like that, but we do have a teacher that was interested in getting her license, so we're able to do that. The next few slides are on your handout, too, are just going through our implementation guide. This isn't something we just bite off in one big bite and it's in place. We have a three- to five-year implementation plan to roll this out. So you'll see there what we're doing each year. This year, we're starting primarily with our juniors and seniors, helping them get connected to community resources, go through these courses, and then get into jobs. But the goal is to expand it to freshmen and sophomores. And really, work-based learning, the career and technical ready, is all students. So even our most severe needs students, we want them to be contributing members of our community. And one of the best things we can do for them is help them find a purpose if they're not sure that they have jobs. It's a common worry, it causes anxiety, and then they become homebound. And we want to avoid that and have them in our communities giving back. Again, these are our future goals. Plans can adjust as we go through the program, of course, but this just explains a little bit about where we'll go from here. There is funding attached to these plans, so the curriculum, there's grants we write and we already have. So it cuts it down from $3,000 each to $500 for the first three years, and thereafter it's $2,000 when we have this approved plan for MBE in place. We've already received their approval, which you guys saw last spring and have one of your board meetings, the request for the program. So we'll continue to implement and work through other grants. There's a LIFT grant that we provide up to $15,000. We need to partner with a business in town, so we're actively looking for a business that would be interested in partnering with us. Currently, we have different things where our kids go to Marshall and partner and work in that community, and we'd like to bring that to our community. So we'll be actively working on that this next year. It might take a year, it might take a couple of years to establish that. We like to look at places that they could get a variety of job experiences within one workplace. So if you think about, for instance, a hospital setting, there's not only healthcare fields, there's food service, there's custodial, there's always all the electrical, plumbing, leadership. There's lots of different ways we can support kids' career paths in businesses that have multiple areas to work in. This can be expanded to kids that are also looking for a career track in college. So like our Grow Your Own teacher pipeline, that this also can help kids through that that are on an IEP. Another thing that we are hoping to offer for our special education students are fac nights, learning how to potentially look at a two- or four-year college. They may not dream of that yet because they don't have the confidence, but we hope through some of these courses and experiences that they will build that confidence. Who has the best chance of making good choices in life? It's the adolescent who has already had a thousand different choices to make. And if we don't give them those experiences to make those choices, then they go out into the world not knowing how to make decisions and likely lose their first job or two or three, and then they start to give up and become homebound. And we just want to avoid that. We know that kids with disabilities will not have the disability go away, but all of our students with disabilities can learn to navigate their disability. The supports that we provide now, although they have the best intentions, may make future opportunities more challenging unless we adjust and give them these real-world opportunities. The supports we provide are most important, and our goal is to provide the balance of supports and teaching advocacy. So, do you have any questions?
When are the classes, when do they hold the classes? What times will they be doing this? Is it after-school program or will it be as part of the curriculum?
It'll be part of the regular coursework that can fit their graduation plan. Kids on IEPs, not so much our kids with learning disabilities, they need to match the credit requirements in those classes, but certain students may graduate off of their IEP and fit these classes within it that way. So there's a couple different tracks you can go. The IEP teens always make those decisions.
When students get on the job experience, do they get paid for the time they work in the workplace?
Yeah, that's a good question. So they can. So the community resources that we work with pick private industry council, just different ones that they do allow for that. So our teacher works with them, we meet monthly with all of those service providers from our region, and they come into our schools already, even before we had the work-based learning program, and help our kids get connected to jobs that they actually get paid for.
You touched on one other question I had about community partners. You mentioned the private industry council. Are you working with any other local organizations to create partnerships?
We work with the county services, the achievement center, really, our school, it's Nobles County, but typically it's our school. We invite all the other schools around us, even if they're in the neighboring counties. But we just send the word out to the county, and then they have the connections with all those other community partnerships. And we have been so lucky. Everybody wants to come to the table and help kids get connected. So really, any, the colleges, they all attend this meeting once a month for us, and then we set up, like even getting my driver's license, all of those things we work through. Any agency that provides, I'm trying to think, there's a couple of new ones lately, too. The name of their agency is escaping me, but they come and they all kind of navigate it. I can take care of this part, I'll coordinate student on that part. And then our teacher lines it up in their schedule, and they come to the media center usually, or they have a meeting room, and the kids never have to leave the building to go set all those up. So, yeah, it's pretty cool to watch it all in motion, and then the kids can leave with a lot of skills and confidence to get a job or go on a college if they choose.
Any further questions for Allison? Hearing none, thank you for your presentation. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of agendas.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the main agenda.
Second?
Motion by Steve, second to Matt, by Matt, to approve consent agenda and main agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0 approval of minutes.
I make a motion to approve our July sixteenth board meeting minutes and the committee meeting minutes.
Motion by Adam.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0, the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Steve to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, main agenda. 5.1, monthly financial overview. Dave?
You should have the revenues and expenditures through the end of July, so we're just getting started in our fiscal year. Not a lot of activity. As you can see, it follows pretty closely to where we were at the same time last year. Pat and Ryan have been working with the auditors, getting ready for the audit. I believe a lot of that work will start next week, and they'll start working on that so that we have that ready in November. And we'll have a little better idea of where we ended the year once a lot of that work is done.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Hearing none, thank you, Dave. 5.2, approve revised employee handbook. This is... Any updates on that?
The employee handbook was updated and changes have been made, and it should be ready for board approval. The operations committee, I believe, was recommending approval.
I move to approve the revised employee handbook.
Motion by Erin.
Second, Matt.
Second by Matt, to approve the revised employee handbook. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.3, approve strategic master plan.
So this was presented both to instructional and operational, and again, this is a guide at this point. The goals were updated related to where we're at. It's the guide that will probably guide you for this year. And with that, then, I'm assuming within a year or two, it will be updated and probably look much different than it does. Typically, your strategic master plan is really one page front and back. This is longer because we also have the building goals on here as well as a facility plan. But with that, this is kind of the process we've followed the last, oh, probably ten years as far as what it's looked like. So based on that, recommend approval.
So move approval.
Motion by Steve.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom, to approve the strategic master plan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.4, approve student handbook changes.
So these were presented to the instructional committee. The principals made changes, and a number of the principals are here if you would have any questions on the student handbooks. But at this point, the instructional committee did recommend approval.
I make the motion to approve the student handbooks.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Erin. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5, approve second readings of policies 506 and 507.5.
So with these two policies, 506, they were at the, I believe, the instructional committee, 506. There was some minor adjustments related to that in the disciplinary, it's the student discipline. Those came from the principals and were based on their input, and the adjustments occurred there. The 507.5 school resource officers did not change, but I did want to follow up because there was expectations related to, in the agreement with the city related to SRO, there were a couple things adjusted based on they're not in practice or not doing it anymore, such as some of the programs that they were doing. So they should be ready for approval, so the recommendation would be for approval.
I make a motion to approve the policies 506 and 507. Second reading.
Motion by Steve.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.6, campus special election results.
So with the special election results related to referendum, there were 623 yes votes, 1,357 no votes, and that was all the precincts reporting. And with that, then, the referendum failed, and you would need to approve those through the resolution of canvassing returns, which would be a roll-call vote.
I make the motion to approve the canvass of special election results.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Adam. There's nothing to discuss, I guess. Roll-call vote.
Mr. Prentz.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Prentz.
Aye.
Mr. Blum.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Resolution carries. 5.7, approve first readings of the policies listed. I'm not going to read them all.
So all these policies were updated. There were a set of policies that were legal changes that were minor, that were just updated, and a lot of those were due to law changes. So they were, I can run through them, but there were a number of those that occurred. The policies that are listed, there were some changes that needed to occur based on the legal stuff. They were a little broader, so they needed to come to the board for approval. These do follow MSBA policy, and based on HR attending a legal conference on policies and things like that, the attorney that was presenting recommended that you stay as close to MSBA model policies as possible. So with that, the recommendation would be for approval. First reading.
I move approval of the policies first reading.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Erin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approve tax abatement resolution.
You held the tax abatement hearing this evening. It's for KJSM Investments, and it's Lot 7, Block 1 of Cherrywood Edition. Address is 2355 and 2365 Cherrywood Lane, Worthington, Minnesota. Parcel number is 31-1240-535. So the recommendation from the operations committee was approval.
I make a motion to approve the tax abatement resolution.
Motion by Steve.
Okay.
Adam. Second by Adam, to approve the tax abatement resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll, right.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Prentz.
Aye.
Mr. Blum.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Resolution carries. 5.9, approve out-of-state travel request.
The out-of-state travel request is one that I made related to attending the national conference, and that would be coming up in March.
I make a motion to approve the, motion to accept the, or to approve the out-of-state travel, sorry. Second.
Second by Matt, to approve the out-of-state travel request. Any discussion?
So what do you do at the national conference, then, John, at that time? I mean, is it like a leadership?
Leadership, breakout sessions, yeah, on a variety of different topics.
So, and I know I'm not trying to be rude about it, but if you're really looking to retire in July possibly, and you're going to go in March, what are we going to benefit as a district by doing this, is my question?
Well, I'm hoping that there's some information I can bring back to leave for my predecessor as well as administrators that are here.
So if, say we do have a new hire at that time, can we also request that they would be going to this if it allows?
You could. Yeah, you could. They may be going from their own district, depending on who it is as well. If they're serving in a district.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, estimated cost at all, Mr. Langard?
I don't remember. It's like $1,000 on rough numbers, registration, and then there's motel rooms, and then air flight, and some food.
Have you attended in the past?
I've attended one, and... I've attended one, and it is part of my contract.
Explain more of that to me.
So in my contract, it does say that I can attend national conferences every year.
That still requires board approval.
For out of state travel. Yeah, that's your policy. Anything over 300 miles are out of state travel.
It is challenging me for, challenging to me to support the, the travel, given the timing of it. I mean, I, I mean, it is, it would have been easier for me to support it a year ago, given the scenario of your last months of in the other position. But I mean, I do see value in it being in your contract too. That's just comments, I guess. Discussion?
Are there any conferences earlier in the school year?
There's actually one I'll be attending in, in the beginning of October.
Where is that?
It's up by Brainerd.
Any further discussion? I believe there is information John can bring back to the proceeding or the person who's going to follow his footsteps and some ideas for the district that's, I think is valuable in more than ways than one, so.
Mr. Chairman, one last question. Has this been a part of your contract since the start of your tenure?
Yep.
And you've just attended one time?
Yes.
Entire tenure?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Five point ten approve acceptance of cultural responsive art grant.
So Ms. Nystrum presented this to the instructional committee. It's a grant that she has received in relationship to providing cultural responsive training, and the board would need to approve acceptance of that grant. And the instructional committee recommended approval.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll move to approve acceptance of the culturally responsive art grant.
Second, Matt.
Motion by Erin, second by Matt to approve the culturally responsive art grant. This is applied for an annual basis?
It's actually a three-year grant that she received, so there's funding each for the next three years to support that.
How, how much do they get?
Oh, boy. I don't remember. Do you remember?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand.
For the three years?
Yep.
Sixty-five thousand each year, right? Is that how she explained it?
I'm not 100% sure. Most of it's going to be at the high school setting, professional development.
I'm not 100% sure, but I thought it was 65,000 each year. It was going to be awarded, wasn't it?
Don't remember.
I don't want to be quoted on it, but I, I remember hearing that.
I don't, I don't 100% remember.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point eleven approve resolution of school board governing board supporting Form B application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation.
Yeah, so Mr. Dale has asked for approval to apply for this. It's a grant that's offering funding to assist schools to provide seminars, training opportunities, and specific functions for students, faculty, and officials who are involved in the athletic and fine arts programs. And this was kind of a last minute thing he sent. That's why it was, it didn't get to the instructional committee as a presentation item. So I would, based on my conversation with Mr. Dale, I would recommend you approve it.
Is there a deadline on this grant and the application?
Yeah, really short. That's why it landed on this agenda.
He knew about this before the instructional committee?
No.
Is that short of a deadline? Just fired out?
It, I got the information, I saw it like Wednesday or Thursday, and it's due like the week before the school board meeting next in September. So that's why it's such a short timeline.
I move approval of the resolution.
Okay, motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Erin. Prove the resolution as it's being in front of you. Any further discussion? This is the resolution. Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution passes. Five point twelve approve adjustment to EL data assessment.
So yeah, this would be an adjustment to the three coordinators, the EL coordinator, the data assessment staff development, and curriculum coordinators. It's related specifically to health insurance. When those were agreed upon, they tip, those positions typically followed the EMW Worthington insurance contributions, and somewhere we got off on that. We finished with these probably earlier than when we finished with the teachers association, and so we're trying to correct that. It was presented to the instructional committee and they recommended approval. That's why it's on the agenda for approval.
I move for the adjustments for the insurance side of the, for the English Learning Department.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Steve.
Three people.
Three people. Any further discussion? This is a regular motion, right?
Yeah.
All those in favor, the motion, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point one three is approved salary and benefits for the secretarial association.
So the MSEA group secretarial association, we reached an agreement with them. The increase in salary and benefits for 2425 is 6.73%. The second year, 4.55% for a total of 11.59% over two years. That is salary and benefits, so it's all costs to the district.
I move approval, Steve.
Second by Tom.
Motion by Steve, second by Tom to approve salary benefits increase for the secretarial association. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All the items, school reports. Superintendent's report, John.
So quickly, I just got a couple of items here. One, I laid enrollment projections report. I updated this today. It's based on the numbers we currently have. I will tell you that there are a number of enrollments that I, some enrollments that are not in the system yet, and those need to happen. But if you look at Prairie Elementary, we're projecting at 698 for this year right now. That's registered students. Intermeat, 705, middle school, 675, and the high school, 1148, along with the learning center at 106. So we're at 33, 32, which is a little bit higher, or it's pretty close to where we're at. What's not in there are those enrollments that have done and they haven't gotten entered into the system. And the other piece is, we've termed it as the phantom kids, the kids where they may have moved out of district, and we haven't seen a records request or those type of students that are not returning. So these numbers will change typically, I will tell you, and I'll bring one back in October for the October me. That's when we finally feel like we have solid numbers that we'll have. So there is a slight increase, but as you know, it's pretty stable enrollment as we go out. And as you get out to 28, 29, it gets a little bit hard to project that. It will change, just don't know how much. On the backside of your sheet is the vibe enrollment. The vibe enrollment currently right now is 596, and we do know that will go up. There will be more students in the program by then. I'm guessing we'll probably land in that 675 to 700 range by the final numbers come in, so. So that's the enrollment projections. The ones, like I said, in October, that will give you a better view. The last enrollment numbers that we looked at were back in, I believe it was April, so. With that then, I did email out to you, the city council will be meeting about their, their work on the ICE Arena plans, and with that, that project is moving along. They have a work session tomorrow afternoon to look at that and the price tag and kind of hopefully continuing to move that, that project forward. So you should have that. And that, let me see, ICE Arena. Oh, I did want to update you on the unemployment costs for the district for this summer. We're looking at approximately $450,000 to $475,000 in total costs related to unemployment, which the legislature approved for those employees that aren't working over the summer. With that, we've found that we have a little bit of a problem going on in that we have a number of employees, the pair groups primarily, that collected unemployment and now this week before school starts are resigning. And so it's putting us in a little bit of a blind to have enough staff ready for the start of school. So with that, I will tell you in negotiations where we're at, we met with the custodians on Monday, and on Monday, they did not move, we did not move, and they intend to file for mediation or have filed for mediation. We met with the pairs association today in basically the same scenario, and they plan to file for mediation as well.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions for John?
When it comes to the district's direct cost for covering unemployment, am I correct in understanding that the state is covering a portion of that cost for this year?
They're covering 90% is how I understand it, and when they did this, they allocated $135 million for costs. That 135 million will basically be gone this summer, and there is at this point no new allocation. And the district does not have the ability to levy for those unemployment dollars like they could for other unemployment expenses. And hence, come next summer, unless the legislature does more to replenish that fund, that will come directly out of your general fund dollars.
But this year, we can see about approximately $45,000 coming out of our own district to cover unemployment, which is 10% of the total cost. I have another question about the ICE complex progress. In one of the documents that you shared with us, it stated that there was school board representation in the, the work sessions. Who on the school board is part of those conversations?
I don't know if it was school board or school district representation. I know Mr. Dale was. I don't know who else. They never sent me who was on the committee.
Okay. I think it would be, it'd be great if someone on, if there could be school board representation in those work session meetings.
I can, I can throw it out to them.
That one tomorrow, that's just the city's workshop then, right?
Pardon me?
Tomorrow, that's, that's just the city's workshop then.
Uh, yes, tomorrow is a city work session, strictly city council. Yep.
And they actually have a price figure on the complex, or they're going to start talking about their dollar commitments? I mean, what, what are they going to get into? When are they going to step up, I guess, is my question.
Well, I suspect tomorrow they'll kind of at least. It's a work session, so they can't take action, but I suspect that's when they'll make some.
City council, they'll have something maybe.
Yeah.
The documents that were shared with us in the past week includes some designs and blueprints along with budgets to go along with, like one sheet versus two sheets. So I thought it was insightful, you know, after making a big decision and then not hearing a lot. It was nice to see some updates.
Okay, any other?
Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Langard. If you could give me a little more detail on the mediation process and the steps that happen next for that.
So in mediation, basically, they have filed for that. The Bureau of Mediation will assign a mediator. There will get to be a date scheduled for the mediation, and then at that point, we'll end up basically in one room in the beginning. The mediator will give us all directions, and then the employee group will sit in one room, and the district group will sit in another room, and the mediator will run back and forth and try and work towards an agreement. And it can be one hour, two hours, or 13 or 14 hours.
The cost of that person is?
Split between the association and the district.
Any idea what that fee is?
It's not a terrible high price fee.
So is that something that should have come in front of the board to increase the pay we were willing to pay before we went to negotiations or?
We will want to meet with the operations committee regarding these two, yes.
Should that be a whole board decision then, or?
Typically, it has not been, but a committee could recommend to go to the entire board.
I mean, it seems like we're fairly close on the custodians. Are we fairly close on, on the pairs?
The last offer to the pairs on our side or on the district side was 10, or 11.6, and roughly the last request from the pair group was somewhere between 14 and a half and 15%.
So what was their increase two years ago? That was a substantial increase two years ago too, wasn't it?
Correct. I don't remember the number. It was over 10%, I believe.
Timeframe on mediations, within the next month or two? Time frame on mediations, within the next month or two?
I would say in the, sometime in the next two months, but it depends on how busy they are.
How does that work when you start a new school year, then? Do you have to back pay?
So currently, they are working under the existing agreement until a new agreement is established. As far as talking about back pay or retro pay, that's negotiable.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going on the assumption at this point that the next Operations Committee will be having this as part of our discussion, as, as the appointed representatives for the school board for negotiating with the, with these groups this year. The instructional usually does the teachers, licensed teachers and stuff, and then we do the rest. So, so I'd imagine we'll have some more discussion and find out more about what's going on with this, and go from there.
It would be Operations Committee technically doing mediation, the mediation.
Yep.
It's, that's the group that you have, so.
There's nothing that says you can't continue negotiating up to that point.
Up to mediation, so you still negotiate, it's not?
If you wanna make a different offer. Or they do.
Okay, any further questions for John? Move on to Instructional Committee report. I guess it was you.
I believe everything was covered, Mr. Chairman.
Everything was covered. Operations, Steve?
Was covered.
Aaron.
Nothing further.
Everything's covered, okay. Any other reports? Other business? We have a workshop scheduled for the 29th, which is next Thursday, week from Thursday, from 12 o'clock to 2 o'clock at the green, at the administration office. And the subject is the superintendent search process, and if there's something else, I don't know if we'll have time for any other agenda items or not, but the ref, you know, the building issue that was defeated, or the bond issue, we'll have to discuss that at some point. I don't know if we'll have time to at least talk about a little bit that day or not, but depends on the timetable.
No, we're gonna do that on Thursday, so my question is, if we're gonna talk about a superintendent search, do we need a, a letter of intent that John is going to retire before we continue on?
You'll get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we'll have it by then. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Anything, as far as specifics on the agenda for that day? I mean, do we have?
I believe Lisa has MSBA scheduled to come in.
And then that's the primary?
And they'll do a presentation, yeah.
Okay.
I think that this work session agenda should focus on the, on the board's plan for filling the superintendent role. I think we should limit the, the topic, or the agenda items, to focus on, on that area and the subsequent issues around it. But I, I do think that the board needs to get together sometime soon to talk about what comes next in terms of our building priorities in light of the failed referendum. And, and so I would suggest that we schedule a second separate work session in the coming month or so to come up with a game plan for what's next.
And I have a bit of a fear that we'd have the entire time as just a sales pitch from our organization to use their services, when we're still not sure if that's the route we wanna choose. And so I'd like to be sure that we're able to discuss amongst ourselves without their influence what kind of vision we have for the process.
What time?
I mean, that's important part of the discussion.
Twelve to two, so you could start out in the meeting at noon and schedule them at like 1:00.
I think it would be helpful for us to have a little bit of time to discuss before we, we like receive the presentation, but Lisa, I don't know what time is that presentation gonna begin?
I thought noon. I assumed it was like the last evening hour, but I find that out.
So why is the deadline two hours? Is there a time that we?
That's usually what we schedule, otherwise it gets to be too long.
It's basically, the MSBA is gonna give us their procedures.
Dog and pony show.
What's that?
Their dog and pony show.
Well, it's kind of a procedure that they would recommend, or explain to us how we wanna proceed. It's no pressure, there's no commitment, it's just here's how's, they will give us an idea how they proceed for superintendent searches. We can take it or leave it, or do what we want, so it's nothing that we have to do, it's just, it's just the beginning of the process, so. After they present it, we can surely talk about which way we wanna go, so. Any future business? Okay, hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting.